Hello, everybody. It's 7 o'clock. Let's start the July 9th, 2024 Town Council meeting. If we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lilly, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Anybody inside here like to make public comment? You're more than welcome to come up to the podium, state your name. Mm, 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 mm. Outside, we are in the midst of another heat wave. Until tomorrow, Wednesday, July 10th, the Community and Senior Center located at 321 New Britton Avenue will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., where residents can use it as a cooling center. If you are concerned about an elderly or disabled resident during this time, please contact Community Services at 860-675-2390. And if you have been following our Explore Farmington, there's a big congratulations to Dave from Dave Shoe Repair for 56 years of business here in Unionville. I know a lot of us have used him for belts, shoes, police equipment, fire equipment, and such, so he's been a great asset to us all in our town. Services of the Elderly will be doing Driving for Hope Charity Golf Tournament. It will be on September 26th at Tunxus Golf Club. $1.75 per person, or $60 if you just like to attend the dinner. Contact 860-673-1441 for more information. And as you know, this week is the Tunxus Hoes Carnival and Parade. Thursday night is Family Night, and we'll be having our summer concert series down at the area in the parking lot next to Union School, and they're featuring Bandit's Night Shift. Also, we have fireworks on Friday at 9:30, and Saturday is the parade starting at 6:00, and I hope to see everybody there. And we'll move on to Board of Education Liaison.
Just if I can interrupt, the audio is back working again.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Board of Education is off for the summer. They don't meet until September, so nothing to report.
Thank you. Conservation Inlands Wetlands.
Conservation in Inland Wetlands is supposed to meet tomorrow, but last I checked, there may be a form issue, so the meeting might be canceled. There have been a couple of cease and desists issued related to some clearing of trees. And as I understand it, town staff is working through those, and then some, as I've, the same types of applications and approvals for general routine projects in the inland wetlands area.
All right. Thank you very much. EDC.
The Economic Development Meeting that was going to be held on June 26th was canceled, and their next meeting will be September 11th, so there's nothing new to report.
Thank you. Town Planning and Zoning.
Town Planning and Zoning has met with their regular meetings. They usually have a full agenda, and I would highlight a couple projects that I think are noteworthy. One, which they approved a while back, was the improvements over at the Plaza where Eminem &amp; R Liquors is, Starbucks, Naples. That work is obviously commencing, so I think people that go by there, or, you know, go to these businesses, are going to be a little bit inconvenienced. We knew when that was approved that would be the case, but I think the improvements are coming out and making the Plaza look, you know, pretty sharp.
And all businesses are open for?
And all businesses are open. We're working through the logistics, and so I think that's a noteworthy project that was approved a while back. But last night, CDP Properties and 342 Colt Highway LLC application for a special permanent site plan approval for a new fuel service station, convenience store, and quick-service restaurant at 342 Colt Highway, there was a public hearing. There was a presentation, a very comprehensive presentation. There was public comment. Many people talked in favor of that, of that improvement, that, that project. That's the five corners and the abandoned gas station that's been there. So that, at the end of the evening going through, was, was approved. So they are moving ahead. They still have a number of steps to go with, you know, Connecticut DOT, some financing that they still have to, have to put in place, but, but I would say it was a project that was well-presented, well-received, and hopefully on course to be, to be, you know, done at some point in the near, you know, a year or so from now.
Excellent. I know a lot of people have been waiting for something to happen there, so hopefully it will continue.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay. Report of the Town Manager.
You have the writ, excuse me, you have the written report in front of you. I just wanted to give you a quick community service update. I know that many of you are familiar with the summer concert series that are taking place on the Staples House grounds, and also just that our Supportive Services Division has been really busy with a bunch of different activities that are going on. So every so often, I'd like to just give an update on some of the things that are going on in the community, community service area. Just quickly, we are, do have a lot of road projects. The road projects, we're keep, trying to keep up to date on our webpage, and also just to remind people that we do have some new social media posts, and just to, to look at that. And lastly, I left at your places, but just a reminder to, I could say it to the public too, is that Monday, August 26th, between 5:00 and 5:04, I mean, between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m., we're going to have an open house and a ribbon cutting for the new high school at Farmington High School. So I'm sure that's all been on your calendars, but also just a reminder to the public.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have questions? Can we get a motion, please, Keith?
Make a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. On to L Appointments.
Thank you. L4, I make a motion that Ann Newberry be appointed to the Human Relations Commission beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and she is for reappointment. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
L5, I make a motion that Kyla Zimmerman be appointed to the Human Relations Commission beginning July 1st, 2024, ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Again, she is also a reappointment to it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to M Old Business. We don't have none, so N1, please.
N1, I make a motion to accept the deeding of a 4,157 square foot portion of town open space property to WD2 LLC in exchange for the deeding of 4,571 square foot of property from WD LLC to be made permanent town open space on Bridge Hampton Crossing and authorize the Town Manager to execute this agreement.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Kathy.
You remember at our last Town Council meeting, you voted to recommend this exchange of land and referred it to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for a report under the 8-24. On October 24th, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to forward a positive referral to the Town Council with three different recommendations, and those are listed in your packet. I know we went through this at length at the last council meeting, but I have Shannon here if you have any questions on this.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions?
The deed, the agreement, is it going, what are these recommendations from the Town Planning, Plan and Zoning Commission going to be incorporated into the agreement or the deed?
Shannon, can you?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Flanner, for the record. Yes, the conditions, part of it was the original conditions with the proposal that was put forth, which is the five-foot conservation easement along the western, what will be the new western property line, the five-foot, sorry, the fence along that five-foot conservation easement to separate the conservation easement from the usable land area. And then the additional one, that it was actually a recommendation from Conservation Commission to TPZ, and that TPZ adopted, is that any work within the upland area that is shown on the map that was part of the attachment and the agenda, that any work in that area is referred back to Inland Wetlands, and would require an Inland Wetlands permit for work in the upland review, which would be standard practice for any other property with work in the upland.
So are these, how are these, are they incorporated into a deed, the agreement with WD2, like, are they just in the TPC recommendation?
So it's in the recommendations, and then it can be codified and is part of the, the deed with the land swap, right, just as well as the purpose of which we are acquiring the land is for open space to the back, so it would be enumerated in the, in the land agreement.
Okay. I think that makes sense just as for future property owners to know.
Certainly.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Shannon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
N2, I make a motion that the following unobligated CIP balance be transferred to the account listed below for the fiscal year 2024-25 capital budget.
Second.
Motion, second. Kathy.
At the June 11th Town Council meeting, you approved the purchase of a heavy-duty highway dump truck at the purchase price of $249,100. In the capital budget, the amount of $300,000 was appropriated for this purchase, leaving a savings of $50,000. We're requesting that the $50,000 in savings be transferred to a Skidsgear account so that it can be used to purchase a new Skidsgear loader to replace a 1997 loader that was recently taken out of service due to mechanical issues. That was, that, the next item is the purchase of that, and in that agenda item, you'll see that this Skidsgear was set to be purchased in next year's capital, so we wouldn't have to purchase it next year, and we have the money from the savings in this year to do it.
Questions?
Sounds great.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
N2, I make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of one 2024 Bobcat compact truck loader to Clark Equipment Company, DBA Bobcat Company, at a purchase price of $55,181.
Second.
Motion, second. Again.
So again, this would be to replace a 1997 loader that was recently taken out of service due to mechanical issues. We usually use two of these machines for their daily operations. The original plan was to replace it next year. And again, we talked about that we have the $50,000 in savings. It's off a bid, and the purchase would be made under Sourcewell Contract, which calls for a 26% discount off the manufacturer's suggested price.
All right. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
N4, I make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to sign the attached memorandum of understanding between the Town of Farmington and the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, Farmington Volunteer Fire, Farmington Volunteer Fire Department LLC, and Tunxus Hoes Company Number One Incorporated.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Kathy.
The purpose of this agreement has been accepted by the three volunteer fire companies and is recommended by the Director of Fire and Rescue Services. And I thought maybe quickly, our fire chiefs are here tonight. If you want, just stand up and introduce yourselves to our council.
You can go by height.
Chief, tell you what, let's get from each other. Chief, Tunxus, South West State, Mike Bull's Farmington Fire.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. I appreciate it. The proposed memorandum of understanding is for a three-year term and encompasses reimbursement to the volunteer firefighters for recruitment and retention of membership with our predominantly volunteer fire department. The memorandum of understanding encompasses items such as pay per call and pay per drill, an annual donation, and fuel allotment for each of the volunteer fire companies. The proposed changes include an increase in pay slash call and drill and annual donation. It also includes another certification level. There is also minor language changes. It should be just noted that we are very grateful to have our volunteer companies and our volunteer firefighters in town that continue to provide an essential service to our residents. So there's some just minor changes, some financial changes. If you have any questions, myself or the chiefs could answer them for you.
Excellent. Well, first of all, thank you, chiefs, and to all our volunteers for always answering the call 24/7. Is there any questions?
And I'm assuming that the, the change of them giving a list to the Town Manager of the firefighters is kind of dovetails to the new
All right, it is 8:03, we're back in session. Keith?
N6, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a stipulation, a stipulation agreement in the pending lawsuit entitled Town of Farmington versus Enrico Manufico.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, chiefs. Be safe, and hopefully see you this weekend. Don't forget, everybody, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Triple header.
When's the, when's the carnival?
Thursday.
But, I mean, when's the fireworks?
Friday.
Friday, okay, yeah.
N5, to approve the property tax refunds listed below.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, with that, we will go into executive session.
O1, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters concerning pending litigation.
Second.
You could name the?
Sorry, members, members in attendance will be the town council, the town manager, and the town attorney.
You have a motion and a second. So, thank you very much, that's the end of our meeting.
And Joey, just so, Joe, just so you know that we will be in executive session, we do have another item after executive session, so Kat will come back, we'll put the cameras back on again, and we'll be in public session after we have executive session, so.
If anybody asks, we'll tell them that the meeting ended, though, you guys are good.
All right, we'll go into executive session, thank you. We're back on cap? All right, it is 8:03, we're back in session. Keith?
N6, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a stipulation, a stipulation agreement in the pending lawsuit entitled Town of Farmington versus Enrico Manufico.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On that note, before adjournment, please, everybody stay safe in the heat, hopefully we'll see everybody at the Unionville Carnival, Tungus' Hoes, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Make a motion to adjourn the July 9th town council meeting.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, you too.